Hello, my name is Chris Latchmore and I'm the village administrator for the village of Ross's Point. Today you are going to be viewing the audio only for the special board meeting held on December 15th of 2021. Unfortunately, we had some technical difficulty with our recording system and we were unable to provide you with the visual recording. At the board meeting, we had present the mayor, Mayor Thon. We had trustee Benjamin Arnold, trustee Dale Menard, and trustee Brian Pelkey. Others that were also present for this special meeting were the treasurer, Arsen LaTerno, code enforcement officer, John Cooper, the village attorney, Thomas Mernane. And we also had some individuals that appeared virtual. And we had a gentleman from PLM who is helping the village with its electricity load support. And we also had a gentleman that appeared virtual for the New York State Power Authority. Also during this audio presentation, you're going to hear from David Kurtz, who is the developer from ERS, the developer of the property over at the old Pfizer facility on Maple Street. And you're also going to hear the presentation from Harry Akeethan as far as what his plans are for the development of the Pfizer property. You're going to hear Harry explain the facts that he's going to be installing or wishes to install approximately 23 acres of solar panels and also have four or five greenhouses. I hope you enjoy the audio and we look forward to seeing you at the next board meeting.
Investments. Okay, we're going to discuss tonight a tremendous, what we feel is a tremendous opportunity for the village. Harry's got an incredible track record, some of you know him. If you don't know who he is, I suggest that you look him up and see the work he's done. He has many successful projects, one of which is in Watertown, just a few hours down the road, that is really transforming that town. So you'll hear from him tonight, he's going to go through what our plan is, our investment plan is. And we're going to take questions. We did hear the meeting on Monday. What I mean is we heard you. We understand your concerns, some of them are, but we're going to go through them. As we go through tonight, I'm confident that we will address all of your concerns. And you'll be faced with the conversation. So without further ado, Harry, if you want to talk to the group, that'd be awesome.
Thanks. Is it all right if I take my mask off so they can hear?
Sure.
So I'm the CEO of a company called ACO Investment Group. We own an investment firm that started in 2011.
Can you speak louder?
Yeah. So I'm the CEO of a company that started in 2011 called ACO Investment Group, that stands for American Company. I'm also the founder of an energy company called Convolve Energy. Can you? We spent our last...
Okay, Mark can't hear.
Do you mind just putting it on the side a little bit? Let's tell all this cable is. Oh, you can just put it here. Let's put it right there. So if you still can't hear, you can actually hold it up. Sure, yeah. I think they should be here, they should hear me now. You can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So in 2011, we started Convolve Energy as a renewable power company. We went to a number of foreign countries to develop renewable power for them. We were the first ones in Burma, first ones in Laos. We own a power plant in India, we're developing projects in Africa. And then last year, we refocused back on the United States. We felt that the US, over the next 10 years, is going to be the leader in renewable power, especially with what's happening with electric vehicles. So we refocused our efforts. I kind of just said to our group, you know, I want to just focus on America. So we moved back in April of last year. There's a company in the US called Sunpower Corporation, I don't know how many of you have heard of them. They manufacture solar panels. And in April of this past year, the board of the company made a decision to shut down all of their US manufacturing, move it off to a Chinese firm called Maxion. And they shut their operations, closed up the factory, laid off about 400 people. So what we did, you know, through my banking relationships, we need the CEOs, spoke to them. We bought the entire factory, it's about 200,000 square feet. We bought it, all the tools, the equipment. They're all packaged up now, around 90% of it is packaged up. We're moving the entire factory from the west coast in Oregon to Watertown, New York. And construction should start April, it'll end sometime in October. It's going to be the second largest manufacturer in the country to make solar panels in the country. So by June 2024, we have a mission to onshore the entire supply chain back on American soil by June 2024. That's the entire value chain and manufacturing of solar panels. So that's our commitment. We like Watertown because Fort Rome is right next door. Our entire management team that we have hired in the last three months are all from Fort Rome. They're all veterans. So we, you know, that's a commitment that we gave is to hire veterans to bring back, you know, jobs back to American soil. And my ownership team, we all used to work together, there's four of us. So we put our own money in, we don't have any external money, it's our own money. That's how we built up company, right? So the mission for us, June 2024, 2024, entire supply chain back on American soil, hiring veterans. And we have done that. So we have a very good relationship with Jefferson County up in Watertown. We've got about 100 acres of land at the airport, we're building the first factory there. And then we've also got a sister company called Digicallact that's going to be building the next generation data centers. And that's also going to be housed over there in Watertown. But let me kind of walk you through why we do what we do and why are we here, right? So the next 10 years, this country is going to see an investment in sustainable renewable power like we have never seen before. And nowhere else in the world this is going to happen. It's going to happen on American soil. Now, I don't care about whether this is caused by us or whether it's caused by a shift of the axis of the earth, where your time now is 59 seconds and not 60 seconds, we don't care about that. We don't care about what caused it. All we know is there is a transition that is happening and the transition is going to happen no matter what. In that transition, what you're going to see is probably by 2025, 2026, you're going to see vast majority of vehicles going, moving to Africa. The power demand in this country is going to go up two and a half times. There's nowhere around it, there's nothing we can do about it because that train has already left the station. So in the next five years, we're expecting 16 gigawatts a year of solar power to be installed in this country. Now, to give you an idea of what that is, that's about two times what we're installing right now in this country. Two to two and a half times what we're installing today. That is what, that is what is expected to happen for the next 10 years, right? Now, we see a number of problems along with it and we're trying to provide solutions for it. So we don't have the manufacturing wherewithal and capacity in this country because we have outsourced all of it and we don't have it. So we're trying to bring that back. I also see a big problem with climate change, where you've got tornadoes and you've got all kinds of stuff happening and all of your prices are going to be up. So to give an example, you know, we're packing up all the equipment and I can't get lumber. And when we ask why, it's because all of a sudden the demand for lumber takes priority for Kentucky and all these places where there's been tornadoes. So they get priority. As a result of that, their demand is finite. And now your prices have gone up the roof. So the entire supply chain in this country is going to get affected. And that doesn't matter whether it's solar panels, whether it's food, whatever it may be, it's going to get affected. So our view is we see three things. We see manufacturing of solar panels, we see production of food. And data, 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 data is going to climb. The amount of data that we're going to consume is just going to go up. So what does that mean? That means your electric vehicles are all having 15, 20 cameras. The cameras are constantly consuming data and that data means you need data centers. That means you need data centers, not one big data center. You're going to need hundreds of data centers all over every city in America because these vehicles are going to be moving all over the place and they have to be talking constantly, right? Autonomous vehicles are coming. Food is another issue. So what we decided internally to do was, okay, how do we get more sustainable? And we ended up connecting with ERS. And ERS has a site here on Maple Street. And ERS has a problem. They said, look, you know, we're here and we want to do something here. There's a really good opportunity, we've got a site. We looked at that site, there's enough land at that site. So what we said was, hey, look, you've already brought somebody called 2CRSI, which is a publicly listed French company that does data centers for Google and Facebook. You already have them there. Let me come in and build solar power. I'm going to take the heat that comes out of the building and put greenhouses. And we want to partner up with Cornell in Ithaca to build the next generation greenhouse. So let's take the heat, so you have zero heat loss going into the environment. Take that extra heat, because you have to heat up in a greenhouse, you have to heat it up throughout the year anyway. So you got waste heat, so you take that waste heat, you got solar power, take that solar power and stop powering up because inside of the greenhouse, you've got LED lights, you've got humidity controls, you've got temperature controls. All of these consume power, so you've got some self-sustaining power coming in. Why don't we think about this concept and build it and test it? And let's get it up and running so that we can figure out how we can replicate this X number of times all over the country and create manufacturing jobs and take control of our own destiny by producing the food instead of us importing it from Central, South America or even shipping it all the way from California to the New York areas. So this was the plan. So that was a plan that we actually built. We put that plan together, we have submitted those plans. But accordingly, I also understand the concerns that many of you have. So what happens in a small town when all of a sudden you're thinking about investments, you're thinking about jobs? So we ran a calculation. So we understand that at some point in the history of this town, you've had Pfizer, you have had Wyatt, who are pharmaceuticals, who have been here and they've had a lot of employment. Now, that employment wasn't thousands, I believe, right? So now, I don't know that I can create those immediately, whether I can create those thousand jobs, I don't know that. All I do know is what I can do. I think I can get to 40 permanent jobs in 2022, I can get to 100 permanent jobs by 2024, 2025. I can, I know I can do that. I know we can invest $40 million in 2022 and make that investment. But with this, there are a lot of things that we have to commit. And one of the things that we want to commit is, yes, we're going to be consuming power. But we'll make sure that there is high availability in the municipality substation. If anything needs to be done in that substation, we'll pay for it. We'll make sure that PLN is completely comfortable that they do the study and we'll fund that study as well. But I don't think there's any way around this in the sense that we have to consume the power to run the greenhouses to run whatever we want to run. But we can also add additional solar capacity to reduce the amount of power that we're going to be consuming. We can generate our own power inside the meter or behind the meter. We consume that power that we generate from a solar power side. And look at what other jobs that we can create. We've got enough companies that we have and we like New York. We do have a relationship with the state government. We're getting some tax incentives and credits and we want to see what we can do with Ross's Point. We also work with USDA, we're getting some grants and loan guarantees with USDA. We're already started that conversation for the greenhouses. So our plan actually calls for greenhouses, solar power, behind the meter, generating the power, consuming the power, so we can reduce the demand from the municipality substation. Whatever we invest in, we make sure that there's an investment in the substation so that PLN is completely comfortable that nothing will happen to the power supply in the village. There won't be any impact to the power supply. And making sure that we're fully sustainable, where any waste heat coming out of the building is getting completely recycled back into the greenhouse because it does need to be heated throughout the winter months. So this is the current plan. So this is who we are as a company, this is our plan. You know, we have already, I'm done, I'm going to tell you today that I'm already pregnant in Watertown. We've already invested very heavily on the tools and equipment, so we're on our way. We are also ahead of our employment. You know, in 2021, we factored that we're going to hire three people and we're at 40 in 2021. So by 2022, October, we should be at about 350 people in Watertown. That's our current plan. So we are ahead of our investments, we're ahead of our employment already. But I know what we can commit. I think we'll put that on paper. And we would love to work with this town. We do push the envelope in the sense that we're trying new technologies, we're trying new things that other people haven't done. That's what we do. We have taken a lot of risk going into other countries and helping these countries on solar power. And now we want to do that back here in the United States, that's our focus now. So our focus now is just come back to the US to basically create more employment, create more manufacturing and stick to what we know. So whatever we have presented is something that we know that we're comfortable, we know we can execute. We just don't go outside of our area of expertise. We stick within that area, we can execute in that area, we're confident of executing in that area. So we're happy to take any questions, any concern that you might have. But again, our relationship with ERS is, ERS initially came on here and they've, and we have known them, they've known us and they came to us and said, is there anything that you can do? We do like the site, we do want to work with the town and find a solution that works for all of us. And I know some of you have extensive expertise here on the power side, so are happy to answer any questions that you might have, you know, to address that. But what I do know in the conversations that we have had, you know, with your consultant is, I think whatever we want to consume should be under what you currently have. It's not over what you currently have as a capacity. It's under what you have as a capacity, we'll never go over the full capacity that you have. And in addition to that, we're going to generate our own power for solar power. So I think on that part, we're crystal clear with PLN, which is your consultant, on what I think we're going to consume. But you know, we're more than happy, like I said, to invest in any extra production, high availability and extra transformer. We're more than happy to invest to make sure that the community is comfortable with what we're going to do. So we're completely, you know, in full disclosure, full transparency. And one of the things that I've talked about with the village administrator, Mr. Latchmore, is we want to increase transparency, we want to come and talk to you guys about where we are, what we're doing, have, you know, monthly progress reports and conversations about, you know, what we have invested so far, how many jobs we have created. You know, we want to do that. We do want to increase the transparency between, you know, what you currently have and what should be expected. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Harry, did you want me to pull up the emails that you sent and show your plans that you sent to the board? I brought that with me and I know I can pull up the email, it was a meetings meeting, that was a little difficult.
We may have some printouts here as well. So, yeah, I mean, if you... I can pass, I can pass through. If you want to just take a quick look at it and pass it to the next person I can have. I'll upload these diagrams right here. But the greenhouse is hydro products. The greenhouses are going to be a combination of hydroponics and regular because we don't really, as on day to day, there's a lot of conversation on greenhouses. Greenhouses don't make money at all. Almost everywhere in the country, the greenhouses have lost money. So we're going to try two different things. We're going to try the hydroponics on one of the greenhouses and we're going to do the conventional on the other. And we're going to actually calculate the output per square foot and then figure out what is, which one is more economic. We're actually partnering up with Cornell in Ithaca on this, so they are the strategic partner for us. They have already done a lot of studies on this. And what we're focused on are highly perishable items that are coming in from either California or from Central, South America. Your greens and a number of other things that are not available in the wintertime. These are the things that we're actually focusing on because they are, they are highly perishable, they go bad very quickly. And you're paying a lot for it. So that's what we're focused on. So we're going to try both and then we're going to figure out which one, you know, is more efficient and which one is more profitable, which one generates, you know, higher capacities for us to invest in and continue hiring more people. Greenhouses require people. So this is not a fully automated factory. It requires people, it requires visual inspections, it requires constant nurturing. So it requires people and there is high touch. And that is something that I think we want to do. And secondly, it'll be fully organic, there's not going to be much chemicals there, it's going to be organic.
So, Harry, this is the one that you sent over. And we'll get to the employment part of it as well, if you sent over, do you want to go over that? So Mark and Tony, can you hear us?
Uh, someone.
Okay. So, Harry, could you just explain to everybody what this first slide is right here, which is for the...
Yeah, so the first slide is basically going to talk about, you know, how much power we're going to be consuming, you know, from that site.
No, we really can't see that. What's your initial power requirement? What do you need to build, how much?
So the total, the total power requirement is 21 megawatts in total.
It took 17 to run five, it's going to take you 21 to start this up.
It's going to take us 21 in total, it's going to be in phases. It's going to be in phases.
Okay, so you said it's not going to affect the power to the village. What's it going to do to the cost of power? Are you aware of an increase in cost of X number of megawatts or use?
Um, no, so to give you, just to give you an example.
I'm not aware of that.
Yes, yes.
I'm not talking to him, that's part of your...
So as far as I know, if you're within the capacity of what you're allocated for, you shouldn't have an increase in cost. Absolutely not. But I don't know, your negotiations with NICEG and others, I don't know that.
We don't know, we don't know what I'm doing, Mason.
So who do you buy your power from?
Power Authority.
So NIPA, right? So it's from NIPA. So in our case, for example, in Watertown, we negotiate with NIPA and NIPA gives us a special rate because we are manufacturers and we are in agriculture. So they give us a special rate. In that rate, the whole rate is embedded, we get that rate because we're put in the NIPA program. We can do the same thing here as well. And I know we're doing that on the other side and three hours away. But again, our consumption from, from total consumption is going to be 21, 21.3 megawatts, 21.4 megawatts. In total consumption, when we're fully built out.
So you're proposing building a data center as a part of these things, right?
There's a data center, there is the greenhouses. And all of them combined together. And there's going to be multiple greenhouses, right? So it's not going to be one or two or three. I think we're going to have a whole row of greenhouses that are going to be running 24/7/36.
Is the majority of the power going to be used by the data center?
No, it's going to be split half, half between the data center and the greenhouses.
So the greenhouses are going to use 10,000 megawatts?
We're planning about 20 to 25 greenhouses. Each of them are going to be about half, half a megawatt because you're going to have LED lights and they're running a lot.
Right? You're talking megawatts, you're talking watts?
LED lights do consume a lot of power. So in a vertical farm, you're going to do a vertical farm? You've got rows and rows of LED lights. I mean, you're talking a lot. We're not talking about just these lamps, right? I mean, you're talking, you know, if I put up a vertical farm inside of the building on a warehouse section and I'm putting up a five-layer, seven-layer vertical farm, that's going to consume, one section is probably going to consume about three to five megawatts.
So you presented that, you have that information, you presented that before.
Correct, we've presented that in aggregate, we've put that into a document, we've also given you a one-line diagram in total capacity of what we're going to be consuming. But if you think that there's going to be a rate increase, tell us and let us know what that is so that we can have an internal discussion that it doesn't affect the community, right? Because if you say, hey, look, the community is going to get affected, come in and tell us what that is so we can plan that accordingly and budget that. What we're saying to you is this, we're not looking for, you know, a confrontational situation with the community at all, zero. If you think that, hey, you know what, if you consume this much power, my rates are going to go up by this much, tell us that and we will then factor that in and figure out how we can either absorb the rate or what do we need to do to go talk to NIPA to make sure that you don't get slapped with that. Because in our case in Watertown, we're going to be consuming, let's say we want to consume by 2024, 45 megawatts of power if I'm going to put in, if I'm going to put in a wafer cell factory where we take the raw polysel and convert that into NIGA. It's about 45 to 50 megawatts. Where do we get that allocation from? We apply to NIPA, NIPA gives us that allocation so that township is not slammed with the rate increase.
Well, we're, we're, it's a big difference between town and village.
Sorry?
No, I mean, don't apologize, there's a lot of things, as far as negotiating with NIPA, the village...
We've got to deal with NIPA for the hydro. So going through NIPA would bypass us.
And wouldn't the solar panels also affect that?
No, the solar panels are going to cut down the amount of power, right? Because we, we're going to put the solar panels on the inside of five to six megawatts.
Wouldn't that change your...
Mark and Tony, answer that because they're the representative to the New York Hydro Authority. So they'll be able to tell us exactly what's going to happen to that. So, Tony and Mark?
Hello, folks, this is Mark.
I wonder why you're not coming over. Well, if you can't hear, I'll have a speaker.
Do folks hear me?
No, we don't.
Okay, it's Mark Cudero, Tony had to step out for a moment. But this has been a little difficult to follow, but I understand that there's some significant load additions are being discussed, which is always intriguing and fun. The village of Ross's Point is a member of the New York Municipal Power Agency. They get approximately 13.7 megawatts of firm preference power from Niagara, which NIPA, the power authority, has the license, the license holder for that project. NIPA is a consortium, it's a joint action agency comprised of 35 municipals in the state that manage Ross's Point's supply within the restructured electric markets. I'm known as the New York Independent System Operator. So I think it's a big misunderstanding what I was hearing about, go to NIPA and get a big allocation to serve this. We need to be careful, I would caution against making assumptions about what that allocation would be, how big it would be, what it would be priced at. Just be very careful about that. The 13.7 megawatts of preference power I was describing, that is just that. It is defined as preference power in the Niagara Redevelopment Act and hence is that it costs a supply, it costs a production. I don't think, you know, you're going to be finding additional large amounts of that unless there were some significant benefits. But this is, this is a lot of information being bandied about. I'm not sure where to go with this right now.
Well, can you hear me, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, so if they were to use the power that they're asking for right now, would that restrict the village as far as future growth for other businesses coming in? I mean, that's a concern. And the second thing is, is the way that the village municipal lighting is set up right now for electricity. As you know, the way that it's set up now, if there was a brownout in part of the village, we had another leg that we could supply power to so that that brownout would no longer exist. With the power that they're looking at drawing, would we have that capability? And what effect is this going to have on future growth?
Folks, you're almost asking for open-ended security under, and I can't, I'm on the phone.
Okay.
You know, I mean, your growth, I suppose, is limited to the amount of land you have that's available to be exploited.
No, no, but I'm saying for the hydro power. I mean, once we use our hydro power, we're going to have to purchase more of the additional power for growth.
Yes, yes, but I think it's feasible if the parties want it, both the village and the developer, to negotiate a retail rate that would accommodate a lot of those goals. But can I say on a speakerphone that, yes, I can guarantee that? No, the two parties would have to come to terms.
Okay.
But you know, there's, you do have some available right now above and beyond which is being used. It's not a whole lot, it's nowhere near, you know, 21 megawatts that is being contemplated. But there is roughly, based on current load levels, it's roughly about, well, it depends on the time of year, obviously. You're a winter peaking system, as you probably know. So there's more available in... Um, so there's more available in the summer. Uh, right now, you're using about, you know, five megawatts, between four and a half and five megawatts during the summer out of the 13.7. Uh, this year's winter peak was just shy of 12 megawatts, it was about 11.6. Now, we have to be very careful here about talking about megawatts because the hydro, that 13.7, is not available at 13.7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The Niagara project by definition is an energy-limited resource. It doesn't provide us enough fuel, uh, to run it flat out at full load around the clock. Uh, on average, it's about a 70-some odd percent capacity factor. So, that means that, you know, again, the 13.7 isn't available 24 hours a day, uh, seven days a week. If we have to, you would schedule that in the most optimum fashion, more during the on-peak hours, less during the off-peak, in order to minimize total costs. Uh, there is the potential to apply for up to an additional five megawatts of preference power, um, within the context of the municipal and cooperative, uh, economic development program with the authority. But again, it's five megawatts, maximum to any individual municipal electric utility is five megawatts. Uh, so, you would, we would need, I would suggest planning on, uh, you know, NIPA supplying and hedging, uh, via the market, the additional amounts that would be, uh, of beyond existing hydro, and the potential for an economic development allocation. And that's feasible. But can I give you all sorts of guarantees right now?
So, what happens if we go over the hydro allocation?
Back to the way it was when Pfizer was there. You're buying supplemental from the agency. Uh, the supplement, the cost of the supplemental has come down significantly over the last few years. Uh, you know, we could give you an estimate, we could give you some new budget estimates, but, um, you know, that's what it is. We, you know, the agency supplements the preference power in the hydro when your total load exceeds the available hydro. They used to, you, you, you used to be buying supplemental, uh, 12 months a year, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so if we go back to, say, Wyatt's levels of power consumption, that's just the situation we ended up with. We ended up paying roughly what we were paying under, when Wyatt or Pfizer was here.
Well, actually, I think it would be lower because costs have come down a significant amount since then. Uh, you know, the, the NIPA rates, for example, that the members themselves voted on and establish, uh, have come off considerably over the last few years. You know, the demand charges, the capacity charges are less than half what they were. And the energy market is, is lower, significantly lower. Um, but obviously, there is the, the renewable energy requirements that the former governor, the administration has imposed. Um, you know, policymakers in Albany are, it appears, are trying to socialize the energy markets. They want what they call renewable energy credits, which are effectively taxes, to be the driving force behind the energy markets going forward. If the, uh, you know, the, the, uh, if the objectives are ever matched, you know, go, we become 100% renewable by 2050 or 2070, if it's feasible.
That is a lot to go...
It is a lot to go.
Yeah. Mark?
We could, we could talk about that all day.
Mark, Dale and Art are at the table, Mark. Um, you've been in our substation. Can our substation...
No, I haven't, but...
You haven't been in a substation lately?
No. I've been in Rouse's for a while. You know, Matt Donald was up there visiting a couple of weeks ago, but I have not.
Okay. Well, can you answer a question or get an answer for this board? Is our substation still able to produce its 17, 18 megawatts? That Pfizer used to have? Or is it too old, does it need upgrades?
I don't know, yeah, I, I, I'll let Matt talk with you about that. I believe you've got, what, two 10s, a 14, and a 22 MVA there? Talk, talk with me.
Correct.
But I can't, I can't comment on the age of the facility or anything like that. Best off dealing with Matt on that.
Okay. And, and Mark, how about, like Harry was saying, that it's solar panels that, that they're, um, proposing to install as far as, um, coming back to feed the facility? Is that possible?
Oh, of course. You know, I mean, it, you know, there's no reason why it can't, so long as God provides the fuel. Not to be a Wyatt guy, northern New York is not the greatest source of radiance. There's not a, the sun doesn't shine there all the time, but, um, certainly not, certainly not Syracuse. But it would be fuel-dependent. Obviously, you know, solar is produced during the daylight hours, um. Uh, so, but yeah, that could definitely be a source.
Okay. Does that want to affect the deal with the hydropower because they're on the backside of that?
No, if that was behind the meter, no, it would, no, it would not, no. It shouldn't, you know? It shouldn't. We should, that should be able to be structured such that it would not jeopardize the preference power at all.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that power demand, you said, was like, uh, 21 megawatts? Yeah, the total, when it's fully built out, is 21. Was that underneath what you had before at that site? So, you have seven and a half, seven and a half, no, you have a 10 and a half, 10 and a half, 14, and a 22. And whatever we're going to consume is going to be in or below what you used to have at Pfizer before.
Okay.
And...
My records, my records show that your all-time peak at that facility is, um, a little under 23 megawatt. That was back, uh, around, you know, early 2000.
Right. So, if it was 23 was, was what we looked at, we're asking for 21, so you have, we're under what you had as a peak. We're under that.
No, 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 sir. Total peak was about 23 megawatts, which is about, you know, 11 or 12 greater than what the peak is right now.
Yeah, because the total peak was Wyatt and the village combined.
Correct. And that all-time peak, my records indicate anyway, was roughly about 20, just, just under 23 megawatts. Around 2000, 2004, excuse me. Um, so, if you would have added 21 now, you would, let's call it driving the peak up to in excess of 30 megawatts, 31, 32, you know, the 21 and a half on top of where you're loading now. So, we're talking about 10 megawatts, maybe 10 megawatts more than what you, your all-time peak when Pfizer, or whether it was, it might even Wyatt, Wyatt Harris back then, uh, when they were operating.
Right. And one of the things that we proposed was to go in phases of seven, seven, and seven. So, put another seven on, see what happens, test it, make sure everything works, and then add the final seven in when everything's okay and you have your plans. But whatever your supplemental cost is, you just have to tell us and we have to negotiate that if there is a supplemental cost, which would be the same thing that you had when you had Pfizer before or Wyatt before. But you could do this in phases, so you don't have to go all or nothing. This is not all or nothing, right? So, this is seven, 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 and you can phase it, see how the system performs. If the system needs additional upgrades, put the additional upgrades in into the substation. If you needed another transformer, we'll put another transformer in. Um, and that's, that was our, that was our plan, and that's what we have proposed.
We need to be careful, gentlemen, if I may, and if there are any ladies in the room, I don't mean to be rude or slight them. But, um, it's one, the, the, substation capacity is one thing. We need, we can't assume that that radial feed, I believe, Brian's there, um, I believe that the 115 feet from NISEC is a radial feed. Uh, assuming that's correct, we, we can't assume that, you know, we can add an additional 10 megawatts to that, uh, transmission line. We need, we need to confirm with NISEC.
Exactly. Mark, this is Brian Cokie.
Um, back to the transformer sizes, what you were saying. You said there was a two 10s, a 14, uh...
22.
And a...
Is that correct? That's what I...
That's, that's with fans. So, there's two 7.5s, a 10, and a 14, without fans.
Okay.
So, when you're talking full capacity of two 10s, a 14, and a possible 25, you're talking about running all four transformers at full capacity.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Brian, very much.
Yeah, so...
So, that's kind of my concern, is the size of the transformers. When you're looking at a, you know, when we talk about size of a transformer, um, that's their rating of what they can produce.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not advisable to run these transformers at full capacity. So, when you have a 7.5 transformer, if you run it to 10, that means you're running it right to capacity. There's cooling fans on it that keeps it cool. That's recommended, so if you do have a hot day, you can cool the transformer down, and it could be used for a short period of time. To run that transformer at full capacity 24/7, I wouldn't recommend it.
Agreed. Just thank you, thank you for that, Brian.
So, what, what we are saying is, to add another transformer, not to pull additional power from the grid, but you high avail, you high avail the existing transformers. So, we're willing to put another transformer in on our own budget for the municipality.
Right.
What then ends up happening is you don't balance it out, so you will never, ever get to that situation that you're talking about. You'll never get to that. And we're happy to put that in, right? And then later on, if NISEC comes in and says, I'm willing to give you, I have capacity, I'm willing to give you, you already have the transformer, and you can adjust that so that you have high availability, and you have some additional power coming in, if we are all, you know, working together. But if your point is valid, you're, you're one of us on right. All we're saying is, I don't think you'll ever get to that point, but even if it does, we'll give you another transformer.
Well, like Mark was saying, the most that the village, um, used at one time was 23 megawatts. Um, you're talking using 22 just yourself. So, you would have to add the village's load on top of that, which is another, I've seen it, over 12 to 15 megawatts. And, I said like 12 a while ago, I don't remember. But we've been having different changeovers, and people have been adding different, uh, elements that drop more power, you know, they're upgrading different things. I understand energy efficiency plays a role in it, but we are still going to use more power in the future. Everybody is buying more toys and bells and whistles that they can have. Um, the only other thing that I want to clarify is, when we go into supplemental power, Mark, it's not just Pfizer that paid for that, it was the whole, everybody paid for that. The village residents and Pfizer. So, it wasn't just Pfizer that paid for the supplemental power. I wanted to make that clear. Is that a true statement, Mark?
Um, generally speaking, yes. Unless, you could, in theory, you could, you have the ability to negotiate a bilateral agreement with the customer, um, so long as you can agree to terms that may avoid that.
I do see that.
Something you could discuss with them.
I do see that with the rider A policy that came through.
Rider A is, is a, an available tool right now to shield existing ratepayers.
Yeah.
But, um, that's, that's separate from what I was just mentioning. I think it's fair to say, subject to council's review, but I believe the commission does allow, now, I say the commission, I'm from the Public Service Commission.
Yes, yes.
For, you know, the, yes, for the, for the village, the electric department, and the, and the cut, the retail customer on this scale to negotiate a bilateral agreement. And you could, you could, you guys could arm our soul and come up with something that didn't necessarily employ rider A. It could have a similar effect, but not be subject to the conditions of rider A. I think that's, that's, that is feasible.
Mark, I think, I think we went down that road before, um, with our Champlain Plastics, uh, people, and we were told we could not do that.
By whom, Ben?
I don't know, um, a couple of the past mayors that were here that were involved with that probably have more information or can remember why we couldn't, why we couldn't.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll ask the council when I speak with them.
Yeah, that's, uh, I would like to have that clarified.
Okay.
To make sure that, that we could go down that avenue. And I do like the idea of, if they want to buy their own transformer, and when we rebuild the new substation, we have physicians in that substation to add transformers. So, they could be on their own.
My only, my only comment on that is to make sure you coordinate the loading, anticipated loading with NISEC.
Right.
Just make sure that that radial feed can handle that additional demand. That's all.
That's another concern that I have. Is the high, the high side of our yard is, was rebuilt, a half of it was rebuilt, and the other half I have concerns about. And it was on the schedule to be rebuilt, but with Pfizer closing, it wasn't as neat at the time. And with myself retiring, it went on the back burner. And with our past engineer unfortunately passed away, I think all that information got put in the back burner.
Okay.
But that's something that I'd like to discuss with Matt the next time that, um, he comes up here, to at least show my concerns and what the plans were from the past engineer to where we're standing now.
Very good.
So, one of the points that I want to make is, like I said, it's not all or nothing. We can go gradual, right? So, we could, you know, if we could go seven, seven instead of 21 or 14 until the upgrades are done, if you need another transformer, we put another transformer in. What about grids need to be done, we pay for those upgrades. You own it. We don't want to own anything inside of the municipal yard. We don't want to own it. We'll all, we'll just pay for it and give it to you, and, and you then make sure that you've got high availability and the system is stable, which PLN can do. And then we go gradual, take baby steps and go gradual. We're not, we're not here to say this has to be done day after tomorrow. Let's go gradual and build it and see how it goes. And then you have the benefit of an investment, you have the benefit of trying something new to create more job than, at the same time, if there is supplemental power available, and, and he is right, because we're doing this now on the other side of, uh, other side of the, of the state. So, we can negotiate that, right? Nothing is obvious.
You're willing to pay higher rates, in other words, the rent will just be on you whatever you're willing to do. Negotiate good rates and pay higher rates, and to avoid supplemental charges coming on the ratepayers without gross income.
Correct. So, that's about what we're saying. So, what we're saying to you is, whatever needs to be made available at the municipality, we're willing to put that in into the substation. And the rest of it, we just have to negotiate that, right? We just have to negotiate. If it's a, you know, if it's a pass-through cost, we'll take the pass-through cost and we'll invest in the substation itself. We'll put the money into the substation and invest in that. So, you don't have to put up any money.
There's one element, and that's the village law, uh, that was enacted, which made it illegal to allow, in that time, the diamond mine, the clay mine, things to act server farm. It's illegal in the village. Well, it's not a moratorium, it's black and white.
That's, that's not something that we're going to discuss. Council is, is...
I have nothing to do with data mining.
We're not, it's the law.
Listen, I understand that. What I'm, what I'm saying is that, um, Tom, and we've had that discussion, and that's not something for this law.
Why not?
Because it's a legal issue.
No, the law exists.
All right, that's your opinion, that's great. It's a legal issue, so we're not, it's not something we're...
I was told that was going to be discussed at this meeting. That was, that was a point of the meeting.
Yeah, no, it's not going to be discussed. There's, there's a law that needs to be addressed, and we will address.
Well, Tom, you were here when, I remember I was mayor when it was enacted. And in fact, it was pretty clear what the intention of the law was. It, it's not gray at all, it's black and white. So, to me, believe that, oh, we can't talk about that now. Well, that's a big issue as far as this whole thing goes. We want to develop the village, so we want to get around it. How do we get around it?
Just so you guys know, I have nothing to do with that. I'm here to talk about solar power and greenhouses, data, ERS, and, and you guys. I have nothing to do with that, right? I'm not here...
I have nothing to do with that, right? I'm not, I'm not in that, I build data centers, and I do regular data centers for stuff, but if that law comes to me and says, "I cannot have these servers running my greenhouses," because according to that law, I cannot even have these servers run my greenhouse. So...
Tell them what these servers are for here.
Can I have just one question?
Okay.
Harry, are you affiliated with this Two-CR S R?
No, I'm not affiliated with Two-CR S I. I'm not affiliated with them. I don't have anything to do with them. So, I'm not affiliated with them.
So, you're asking, this is your proposal right here, for twenty-one and a half meg, correct?
The twenty-one and a half meg is consolidated between us, it's coming from that building, right? So, the building is making the request of twenty-one and a half, right? So, out of the twenty-one and a half, we're going to consume about half of it. Two-CR S I is going to consume about the rest half of it.
Because Two-CR S R was here at a village board meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago, probably now, and they were asking for twenty-megs themselves. Will they more if you can give it to them?
Yeah, any data center guy is going to do that, right? All data center guys, the more power, the more power they have, the more data centers are going to build because their demand for data centers is going on. Now, I don't know, look, as a third party, I'm going to tell you this, I don't know where this data line is coming from, because Two-CR S I is the guy on that site, and he, they, all they do is servers for lights of the Facebooks and the Googles and all of them. So, I don't know where these other issues are coming from. I have nothing.
Their request is...
Well, I'm just asking, is twenty-one and a half meg for the whole site, or is it twenty-one and a half?
It's for the whole site. So, this proposal comes in as from that building, from ERS, it's coming in as a request for the whole site. Can we go to fifty megawatts? Yeah, I mean, there's enough space there for me to build, you know, seventy-five greenhouses. And if I do seventy-five greenhouses at half a megawatt each, that's thirty-seven and a half megawatts, but you don't have that power.
Right.
So, we scaled that down, right? So, we can scale it down. So, we're going to build based on what's available. Right? So, it's modular, right? So, you're going to build based on what's available.
When are you going to build the solar panels that are going to supplement energy for the greenhouses? Are they going to be all built concurrent with it? Or are you building the greenhouses first, and then you're going to put in solar panels?
Solar and greenhouses go together. We filed for a special use permit. I believe we filed for it. So, if you give us the approval, we'll go together.
And you already know how much energy those solar panels can produce?
Oh, yeah. We've got all the numbers. I mean, that's the business I'm in, right? So, you know, look, I mean, people say it's really cold and whatnot, but drive around northern New York, and you'll see solar panels everywhere now, right? And unfortunately, what's happening is, and this is a debate that I don't want to get into, who caused it? It's irrelevant who caused it. Colder places are getting warmer, warmer places are getting colder, right? Whether it's a shift in the axis, whether it's the speed average, whether it's morning, whatever, right? Doesn't matter. Ten years out, fifteen years out, the colder places are going to generate more power. Now, the technology is also changing. We have something called bifacial panels now. So, the reflection from the ground, if you have snow on the ground, the reflection on the ground hits the backside of the panel. The backside of the panel also has cell to it, and that is generating more power now. So, even in colder places, the reflection of the light from the ground back onto the backside of the panel is generating more power. That's what we're using, you know, in this installation.
What is the lifespan of solar panels?
Twenty-five. You can push it to thirty now.
And then what do you do with the dead solar panels at the end of it? How do you dispose of it?
Well, so, again, if we have a great relationship, there's a fantastic business that we're going to propose. We're proposing that now in Maine, happy to propose it here. There's a big business in recycling these panels. So, basically, we are going to recycle all these panels, the dead panels. You put them through a smelter, you take out the aluminum from the frame, the aluminum comes out, the polysilicon gets recycled, you have copper, and you have a little bit of lead. That lead gets recaptured into a container, and you send it back to recycling, and you're done. That is a business that very few people are actually thinking about, or we're actually going to be setting it up.
In most cases, dealing with solar panels, and when solar panel projects are approved, the municipality requires a bond to be posted, so that in case the developer is no longer around or is not willing to remove those panels, dispose of them, the bond posted to make sure that if and when electric expectancy of those farms expire, that essentially there's a bond posted to make sure that it can be removed and disposed of.
Yeah, but it depends on the site. If the site is on a lease from the township, yes, but if the site is inside of a privately owned park...
We would probably require some kind of bond, you post to make sure, whether it's, you know, again, that project has got to be viewed by the village, and by the zoning board of appeals. So, that's something that we would probably require, because whether it's on us or on ERS or on somebody, we move those later on. We want to make sure that if and when that field expires, that something can be done with it, not sitting out there as an ICOR for us to deal with, or ERS, or the successor to ERS to deal with it twenty-five years from now.
That's right. I mean, if you want us to do that, but let me ask you another question. There are a lot of dilapidated buildings all over town that is an ICOR. Do you request the owner of those buildings to put up a bond?
A lot of those buildings have been here for a long time, and it's very difficult to get those buildings out of the current confines that we have. So, there's no question about that. What we're trying to avoid is that happening to more properties down the road. In hindsight, years ago, those buildings were built like a hundred years ago, eighty years ago, fifty years ago, they may have not even been zoning in place at that time, so...
I'm with you. Most towns in America are not requesting solar panels to put up a bond for this, right? They're not. But if you want to do that, that's your prerogative, and I'm not going to tell you what to do or what contribute. But if you have an old building, and it's got bought by somebody else, and the town approves the sale...
We don't approve sales. We approve uses, we don't approve...
Right.
But if someone provides property, they can buy it without having to deal with us.
Right. Okay, that's your call.
Yeah, I mean, we try to deal with these abandoned buildings as we can, but it's very difficult, because ultimately, if we're responsible for taking it down, the cost of doing that could be exorbitant. And unfortunately, the county used to reimburse the village for those kind of costs, like back when the housing was taken down. We actually got reimbursed for that. That doesn't happen anymore.
Well, it's different with all the wind farms now, all the solar farms that are growing up, you know, it's short-sighted to just say, "Oh, this is a great project, let's do it now." But, you know, the winter lands have been up for many years now, and they have a life expectancy. And I don't want to see them having to dig a big hole somewhere and just burying a bunch of winter run in the ground. And there's got to be a plan for recycling this at the end of the life expectancy.
So, which is why we're setting up a whole recycling business just for that. Because, I mean, we're a manufacturer, right? So, we're not, you know, we're not just a power company. We're a manufacturer. We do care, we do show levels of sustainability, and we do want to recycle them, and we want to reuse them. The supply chain is going to get even more complicated. Not a lot of these materials are going to be readily available, and you want to be able to take these panels and recycle them, and that's something that we're already getting into. But, there, like I said, I mean, if there's a requirement for a bond, I mean, it's a five-megawatt plant, it's not a big number, it shouldn't be there. And that's not going to be the one stopping the deal, so. But your points are valid. There's very few recycling available in the country at the moment. Actually, even globally, there's very few recycling.
Harry, could you explain, because you're showing a lot of computers, PCs, this is your plan, correct?
This is a collective plan that came from Omega that includes us and Two-CR S I.
What are these servers used for?
These are the Two-CR S I servers. I think they came here and gave you guys a presentation, right?
So, these are the servers that are going to be posted, that's a server farm, that are posting Google and Facebook, and that's what you're generating off each offer?
Like I said, this is a collective plan between us and Two-CR S I. This is the Two-CR S I side. I think they came here and gave you guys a presentation and told you what they're doing. I have nothing to do with that. This is a collective plan. I think they came here in front of you, and they've done it. I think you should just ask them... They've already told you what they're doing. I mean, they are representing Facebooks and Googles and all.
The whole computers are yours on here. How many do you have?
I don't have anything yet. We would propose to put computers in there to run all of our stuff, but we don't have anything there yet. This is a proposal. We will have servers running to calculate whatever we're running, there will be servers running. At the end of the day, it's all computer-driven, to be honest. The temperature is computer-driven, your humidity is computer-driven, your nutrients that go into the system are computer-driven, your production is computer-driven. It's all computer-driven now. All the sensors are computer-driven. So, I think, unfortunately, you buy those systems and you just put them in. You don't, there's no other way around it. And there are people that monitor all the stuff you use too, and a lot of people, but all of your data is computer-driven.
Can you just be clearer on what you're, so what are you going to be producing? What is, what are you actually going to be, what's going to be in the building? Like, take us in there kind of visually, and also what you would produce every day. Just, I think, just be clear on that.
Right. Greenhouses, produce production of food, whether these are greens, whether these are Brussels sprouts and broccoli and greens, solar power on the outside, and a vertical farm on the inside for additional production of food. Okay? So, vertical farms on the inside. So, on the inside, you have a building, you have a warehouse, there'll be vertical farms. On the outside, these are greenhouses on the outside, and you've got a solar farm. That's us. So, that's your part. That's all part. Two-CR S I is putting servers in for the data center. So, the beauty about that, this produces heat. We need that heat. Otherwise, we're going to be consuming a lot of power to generate the heat to keep the greenhouses in the winter at the right temperature and the right humidity. So, they're producing the heat. We take that heat through a pipe and bring it and drop it right into the vertical farm and into the greenhouse. So, that heat gets reused. All of it just gets reused.
So, without them, you'd actually have to get a bunch of heaters to heat the green...
I would have to consume the power to put the heaters in, and the heaters will then generate the heat to maintain it.
So, you have to work together, then, both you and Two-CR S I?
That's exactly why. We work together. We said, "Okay, how many servers are you putting? How much heat are you producing?" I take that heat, and I drop that heat into the greenhouse, and now you've got a fully sustainable system. So, this actually works out really, really well if you want to do this. Otherwise, if you're just setting up a greenhouse, you need heaters, you need the power to take the heater, the heater then has to produce the heat to maintain it at a certain temperature throughout the day. Here, in this case, you're actually benefiting by taking that heat, and, look, in the end, you've got investments that are coming in. There's going to be fifty people, a hundred people running these things. You've got employment, you've got security guards, you've got employment, you've got all the other stuff that goes along with it. So, there's, what is missing in this is no one has actually communicated your direct and indirect impact into the community. No one's measured that. I'll tell you the indirect impact. We've got, what, six security guys running right now at twenty-five dollars an hour? Six people hired at twenty-five bucks an hour. Twenty-five bucks an hour is fantastic. That's fifty thousand dollars a year. Where is that being calculated in an impact? It's not being calculated in an impact. So, you have to look at, what is my direct impact, what is my indirect impact? What about all the supplies? What about transportation? What about logistics? The consumption of fuel, the consumption of food? All of that is going to go up, which is great, because that is all indirect impact into the community where you're going to be doing that. I drive around, and that's what I do, I drive around all the time in all the communities, and I'm like, "Hey, this is a fantastic place to be in. Tomorrow, you could export this to Burlington, Vermont, which is an hour away, and you've got people in the wintertime who are coming in from New York City skiing that don't have any problem paying fifteen dollars for an appetizer, for a salad. All you have to do is produce it over here and take it to Burlington, Vermont."
Harry, can I hold your appointment?
Yeah, sure, please. So, I mean, you're ideally situated in this case. From here go to Montreal, from here go around to Burlington, Vermont. Just Burlington, Vermont alone will consume a hundred percent of whatever we're producing here, it's going to go right in the wintertime to Burlington, Vermont.
So, you're showing our greenhouses a bit?
Well, I mean, you've customized them, but, you know, we gave you full specifications in here. I think they were fifty by...
Mark on the phone?
Hello?
Do you need me to speak around?
I just got one question. So, we can set it up so that there's a deal with, we can negotiate a deal with that one. Take it like secondary periphery to the hydro office, so that way all the residents of the village can get all the hydro like they do currently. Currently, any hydro that is left over, they can get.
I will run that by council and get an answer for you. Would allow a bilateral agreement like that to be negotiated? I'll check.
Mark, this is Dave from ERS. Can you help us in address the transformers quote-unquote blowing up? Because the village has a, is circulating a rumor of the potential for the transformers to actually blow up. Can you address that, so we can get that clear from everybody?
Well, I suppose if we exceeded the, compared the ratings, then that would be damaging.
What would have to happen for a transformer to blow up? Could you tell us that?
I'm not going to comment on that, guys. I'm a, I spend my time in front of a whiteboard.
Are you comfortable that the transformers aren't going to blow up? Have we got past that?
My suggestion is to do a system study to determine what the capability of process point distribution facilities are today, what the transfer capability into the system from that radio feed is today, and what date is being proposed, and how, and develop a plan to make it work if the two parties want to make it work. You need to do a study. I can't tell you right now that thirty-nine megawatts, fourteen is a contingency. I'm not going to give you any. I can't give you the spin.
I appreciate it. Can you, can you, can you help me with this? Can you help me with this with the village rumor in the potential for the transformer to blow up?
Well, I already clarified one thing with Mark, that when you're looking at the rating sizes of the transformers, you call them tens, but they're not tens, they're seven-point-fives. So, ten is at full capacity, cooling fans, it's like running your car at a hundred miles an hour forever. How long is it going to last?
I just want to...
I think what Brian was saying is that the nominal ratings add up to thirty-nine megawatts, and with fourteen being your largest contingency, that would mean you're theoretically firm for twenty-five. Your load historically, a long time ago, was twenty-three. But let's stop it right there. No one's going to add load that is going to put the system at risk. You're not going to do it.
That's exactly the answer. But we're not going to allow it.
Exactly.
That's why we don't want to run the transformers at capacity. So, if you're talking, and you want twenty meg by yourself, and the village is another twelve, you know, you're up to thirty-two meg. So, you're exceeding the capacity that we used to, we used to be at twenty-three meg. So, just do the math.
And they're only willing to supply us transformers.
Right, but nobody's ever told us that.
Yeah, you know, that's one of the reasons why we're here today, is to address that. Number one, PLN is a good job. They're professional, they're very good job. We'll pay for the load study, so you're comfortable with it with your vendor, right? Number one. Number two, you will never get to that position, because Brian is right. There's a rating. There's a rating. If you have the cooling systems, you have the fans, you can get the turn. But you don't get the turn, you don't have it. He's right. So, what do you, how do you fix that? Give you another transformer.
I do want to...
High water capacity. Give you another transformer, we'll pay for it, you load that and sit. But he's right. So, we address that.
Yes, yes.
You will never get to a point where it's going to break. He's right. You will never allow it.
You're going to feel more comfortable now that you've addressed it. And nobody's ever addressed that in front of this board before.
For part of, it was his point, you know, say, "Come in, increase the transparency on what we want to do. We've got a business plan, another charge, the amount of money that is going to be invested," which should be the number-one focus, is what are we bringing to the community? Forget about the power we consume, right? If you really want to push, we can find a way to structure that. We can negotiate whether it's a direct agreement on power consumption, rate supplemental power. Those can be resolved. So, what are we actually doing here, right? Are we creating jobs? Are we creating an investment fund? What is it that we're trying to do, right? Once we get to that point, rest of it is a negotiation. We can technically can be solved.
I think to get to that point, to this, right to this day, things have not been transparent to us. Bottom one. We've been dragged through the mud. We've been... We've been put on social media. We've been put, there was articles in the Sun that we messed up the solar farm or a solar producer panel coming here, which was you that went to Watertown. That was already decided where you were going. It was blamed on us that because of our board meetings, that's the reason why.
My decision to go to Watertown was in December of last year.
Exactly.
But, but that was a total, that was a totally different.
Ladies and gentlemen of the jury.
Thanks, Mark.
Before I go, subject to confirmation, I think, I need to stand corrected. You, in order to do what I was proposing, meaning a bilateral agreement that would shield the other ratepayers without using rider rate, without, you would need a tariff leave approved by the commission that provides for a negotiated rate. They'd have to do a rate filing in, you know, a year. No.
No, do it, do it in a year, but you can also go step by step. You don't have to go all 21. Go, go step by step. Mark wants to go to bed, I'm guessing?
No, actually, I've got a long run.
It's 4:30, sorry. Happy hour.
About that, no, no happy hour.
Mark, you know better.
About seven hours from home, so six hours.
Mark, I got one other question.
Yeah.
To apply a, apply a priority agreement, we have to petition the P S C. We haven't done anything since 1982 with our rate structures. And would that open a can of worms where we would have to do a whole system's evaluation? Rather than just a side agreement?
I don't know the answer to that. That's a good question and I will, I will, I will follow up on that.
Because then it could take quite a bit of time to do that.
No, I'm, I'm not as afraid of P S C dealings as some folks, so.
No.
You know, if you, if there's a, if there's a desire, there's usually a way to make things work.
Yes. Is he listening? Not yet. Is there anything else from Mark? Don't wish nice. I thought P L M was doing this load study and some of these other studies that Mark mentioned. Are they not doing that for us?
They are doing it. They, they, they're doing a system study, but not a rate study.
Right.
They're doing the system.
Right.
What our system can supply.
Including the light safety line, are they looking at that?
Not the incoming radio feed, no. They're just looking at the capacity of our substation and what's available. It's a one-line diagram of our whole system, pretty much.
That, that is a point on. Do we know when we're going to get that?
No.
Yeah, but we could probably get it done quicker.
That's not difficult. That shouldn't take you more than a week, max.
That's what I've, I've been thinking they've been doing that and, and it's been a while, right? No.
No, they haven't, they haven't really started. They've been doing a art fall. We just got the information for the art fall because we had to pull it out of the computer and when the previous engineer died. It was on his computer.
I knew they were doing another study, but I thought they were doing.
I felt one of them was showing for us.
So, Mark, can we get that?
Can you, can you start this study out without having that server farm? Just how many, would you do that power supply to commence it? You wouldn't have to sell a server farm to run the greenhouse.
But then I have to heat it up. How am I going to heat it up?
Again, I'm trying to, um. In fact, I would have to heat it up. Do we have anything else from Mark? Do I have? Do we, do we? I would have to.
Thank you, Mark. Very much, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mark. But one other point to consider, if this process gets complicated into doing a ratepayer negotiation, charge a pilot tax. It goes to the city anyway. Goes, I'm sorry, it goes to the municipality. Charge a pilot, pilot tax. And that fixes this problem.
Problem is, we don't know if we can do that because we're hovering through the P S C.
No, no, but what I'm, no, what I'm saying is, you don't even need to worry about the P S C part. If, if the net, if, if, what you're concerned about is the rate going up for your ratepayers.
Right.
You know what that number is. Charge a pilot, pilot tax to that property. We pay a fixed pilot fee a year. That fixes that problem and they're done. Okay? That's another way to solve it because other municipalities have done that. They have just come in and said, okay, look, I have a cost of an extra $300,000 a year or $200,000 a year as my extra cost. I'm going to charge you a pilot fee for that cost. And you pay that and it goes into the same budget and solves that problem. If you want to consider that. I'm not saying you have to do it. I'm saying that's another way to consider how you resolve this issue. If you, if you, if you want to go forward. Going back to your point about what happens if you don't have a server. I would, I would have to buy heaters and I would need the power to power up the heaters. You want, almost, pretty much, your doubt that is going to be about the same. If the server farm is not there, the power departments are going to go down, how many, probably, how many megawatts? I mean, think.
Probably not. Because I.
If you start the server farm is not going to go down?
You still need to heat the buildings. So you get rid of the heater, you replace the heater, you still have the same energy demand.
Running a heater versus running a server farm then requires same amount of power to you. How do you close?
I use my computers as a space heater when I was over in college. Never turned on the heater for girls.
No, we're not in college, we're here.
So, so your point is now that the efficiency loss is probably 15 to 20%?
I'm trying to make it more powerful for the board to be able to say, yeah, we want to do it because, you know, the power to, we can manage that. We can reduce it enough that, you know, and you don't have the unspeakable law that we have to deal with regarding servers. And that's, the I R F, the I R F is another issue. But that's all I'm saying. It's not, I'd like to see it happen, but you, there's got to be a way to reduce this a little bit. If you can, you know, if, if you're making investment, you know, I, I think it should work out the numbers. Because you're, you're dependent on them, their server farm being approved. I don't see it happening. If it's from a resident and knowing what the laws are, I don't see it happening. They're going to say, no. It's against the law, you can't do it. But it's going to be you, they need to yours or not. If the answer is no, they should know that. If it's, yeah, we can work around it. There's something. I, I think that if we were to just, so the same laws that you're talking about, I read the laws you're talking about, it would apply to us also. It would apply to us also because what it says is you cannot have more than three or four computers running it. That's what your law says. I read, I read it because I think somebody pointed it to me the other day. Even my lawyer's here. My lawyer said, that law affects us also. Three or four computers? Yeah, that's what you, your law says like five or six.
It says, yeah, it's a terrible law.
Five server farms.
I think it's like, it's, it's, it's just three or more computers.
Three or more computers. So if I have more than three computers, I'm, I'm in violation. I know, that's what, that's what it is. The law is only.
Hey, hey, hey. So let me, let me just read the definition. The server farm is defined herein as three or more interconnected computers housed together in a single facility whose primary function is to perform cryptocurrency mining, data mining, or associated data processing. That's the definition.
Well, free, damn, but it's very general. So I'm data mining all my data and when it goes in, I'm data mining it. So you could come back to me tomorrow and go, oh, you're violating it because you're collecting all the data of your greenhouses and you're collecting and data mining it. So this law affects us also.
The way we're being concerned about is entities dealing, dealing with cryptocurrency mining, data mining, or it says associated data processing, meaning, at least my reading of that is associated data processing with cryptocurrency or data mining.
That's a very interpretive, that would say, that would say that.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, listen, I, I'm just reading it that way. And we're, we're having a discussion, so I just want to, at least read that to everybody so they understand what that says. Hold on, I'm coming up to address the board.
Let's do the general question. What is your total dollar investment that you propose to break the Ross's point?
I think in year one, it was 40 million in year one. And the total over six years was 145.
Gary, this is your total employment.
By 2021, it's 165. Year one is 45 in total. This is the breakdown.
I'm sorry, the old thing.
Gary, this is your employment.
Yeah.
Hi. I'm, I'm very thankful for the board and for you and for everybody involved and the wisdom that comes from a big melting pot here trying to make this work. I live right across the street from the facility. So, you know, I came to see what everybody's going on. Now, the greenhouses that you are proposing, what are they made out of? Are they regular buildings? Are they greenhouses or? I'm an old-time greenhouse person here at Ross, so, you know.
So there, there are three different types. One where you see the arch with the plastic cover on the top. And you roll the plastic up in the summertime so the, the airflow comes in.
Right.
You've got one of those.
Okay.
That's not what we are planning on doing. What we're planning on doing is glass on the top, so the light comes in and, and even whatever light comes in, comes in.
Okay.
We're going to have LED light rows on the inside.
Yeah.
And we have ventilated, automated ventilation systems.
Okay.
So they will automatically ventilate. But these are clear structures.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
On the top, they are clear structures. The bottom portion may be non-clear structures, like a, a regular sheet drop wall with insulation on the inside.
Well, it's exciting to see what you're proposing because, being a greenhouse person, I realize how much energy it takes to heat and everything. So to be able to have that work married together, that is, that is really interesting. And so you're proposing four to begin with, six to begin?
Well, it depends on how much power it's modular, right? So if we want to take baby steps, maybe we get, instead of 21 megawatts, we go to 14. So we're under everybody's comfort zone. We're under the comfort zone in terms of the actual power. About one large unit is going to consume about a half a megawatt of power. Because of the lights that are inside and it's, you're right, it's very misleading when you think we know. It's very misleading because you think it doesn't consume a lot of power, but it does.
Yeah.
Each LED lamp is probably a 100-watt lamp. And that 100-watt lamp, you're going to have rows and rows of these 100-watt lamps.
In 1982 in Albany, where they had the greenhouses where they would grow roses, it was $22,000 a year to heat during the winter or to produce roses. So, you know, that, so then my other point is, if we, if you all decide to do that, is there a way that there could be some kind of like co-op store or something like that that would introduce the world to what this Ross's point might be doing, to marrying everything together?
Yeah.
So it would benefit the community as well?
So you, you, so, you know, when I go to New York City, when I go to live, you used to have the farmers coming in on Saturdays and they would put up their, the produce coming from the fresh farms in upstate New York. They would put it up in Union Square.
Yeah.
You would want something similar to that where you can have other people come in into the area and have like a co-op store or whatever. The local people can come in and they can buy it from there. Instead of you going to a supermarket or whatever and buying some, something that's shipped out somewhere else. You buy it from there. And then you can get other people who are producing similar stuff, organic stuff, they can come there. You can put it on a Saturday or a Sunday. You have a, a co-op store and you create a local community to do this. You know, I'm always a fan of taking a baby step and just taking it one step at a time, improving this concept and moving it and trying to get the community involved. And that's part of the reason why we're here, to increase the transparency.
One question is that, that you said you were involved with Cornell.
Yeah.
So is there a way of, like, when, if the greenhouses go through, is there a way of training people in this area to work in these greenhouses to produce this?
So the state, the state will train them?
Like, so if they're not, they're out of high school, they're not college graduates or whatever, is there a program that they could come in and they would be able to have a high-paying job and for the community?
Correct. So we're doing something very similar with Jefferson Community College in Watertown.
Yeah.
Where we're setting up a training program and encourage them with them for solar power, where they learn how to make the panels. Similarly, we would be setting up, if there is a local community college or whatever that is close by here, we would set up a program there. We can get the Cornell guys to even come in and train. Because the, the, this program, the adopting is actually going to come right out of Cornell, uh, Cornell's agricultural division. So we can have, you know, that program set up at a community college and, and get the people that are interested in it, get them trained. And the state provides, uh, uh, job training grants and, and U F D A also provide that. So we would be working with both U F D A as well as, as with Cornell. In fact, the Cornell introduction was made by the U F D A at Watertown.
So we would basically be on the map for the United States for that this coming.
To be very honest with you, I don't think anyone right now, I don't know of any other greenhouses that have been connected with server farms that has done that. I would not hesitate to pick up the phone and call Google and Amazon and go, hey, guys, take a look at what we have done. Why don't you guys replicate this and, or try to, you know, come in and, and do more? And I know what you guys are saying about, you know, server farms, right? Everybody is against it, but, I mean, we all are one on it. I mean, we, I, I, I mean, our computers, our phones, our cars, I don't, I don't think we can run away from it. We have to be careful about what we get into and how we get into it and make sure that we are hedged on the power costs.
Yes.
But there, but again, you have to, you have to look at it, what is the investment? What is the job focus? What, what are we trying to do here in the community and does it help the community? And let's take baby steps and try it out. I mean, we don't know what the answer is going to be a year from now or two years from now, but how do we do it without trying?
Uh, that's your, I don't know if that's your first year or?
Yeah, so this is the payroll stats. The project manager of the site makes $175,000. The site manager makes 150. Controller makes 150. Accounting guys are making 100,000. Site safety inspector makes 100,000 dollars a year. Electricians are making 100,000 dollars a year. The H I guys are making 70,000. The I P systems guys are making 90,000. The agriculture folks are making 75,000. The horticulturists is making 80,000. A studio and site superior 50,000. And this is not a made-up number because I know what we're paying right now. I know what we're paying right now. You can't get, you cannot get even a good controller right now for less than 100,000, 15,000 dollars. Can't.
And, and this is only 34 employees. You've got listed up, up to 100 employees.
Over that. By 2030, yeah. It's, it's all that investment number, but this is what we're paying now. We have a site safety inspector right now and we're paying the guy 100,000 dollars.
Now that you have to buy utilities because the hydroponics and greenhouse are going to take a lot of water.
Yeah, but you know what? Like, you know, a, a, you know, a good friend of mine, you know, you, you asked earlier about, you know, how these lights consuming this much power. So his family owns a company, the I P S in Detroit, and they make the sensors for all these cars. So he's got a factory that makes all the sensors, the chipsets that go in the car, whether they're shorted or not. So he's opening up a greenhouse and what he found out was he had to go buy all these LED lamps, which are very expensive and they consume a lot of power. These are, so he was able to prefab those LED lamps on his own. He prefabbed it. And his net cost was 40% of what's out in the market right now. Now imagine what comes out of this. We may end up prefabbing some of these things on-site. But we don't, like, this is how we run our business. We just go creative. We don't, we don't go buy other people's stuff. We just sit there and we try to create it. But, you know, to give you an example, we, 34 people in year one, this is the salary for 34 people. We can't, we can't find anybody right now for load of this.
And that's a, after taxes, probably about $2 million to the economy overall.
Yeah. I think that number is somewhere, we ran that number. Total compensation, but they got to pay taxes on that, so it's not going to be 2.8 million for the board office. I think they will. Also, well. But, but, but it's, but these are actual numbers of what we are in for them now. So, so this, this number is what we're paying now. Do you know how much water the greenhouse is used? Yeah, actually, let's talk about water more than power. We're, we're in the wrong conversation. We should be talking about water more than power, because power is soluble, you can get it, but water, we need to talk about that. That's going to consume water, but at least you got a resource, you got a lake, but I don't know what comes out of it, I don't know how you guys structure them, that's a whole separate conversation that you're speaking. But we do recycle it, the water, though. I mean, we, we do, we do recycle it. You have a, you have a thirty percent loss on it, but.
But, yeah, thirty percent. It's going to go back to the sewer plant anyway, and it's going to get regenerated out to the, out to the.
Right, right.
Because the current water plant has one point eight million gallons-ish, if we wanted to push it there, but I'm not willing to push it that far. We're working on building a new water plant that uses a microfiltration process, that's going to have a capacity of one million gallons a day. And I'm, I'm trying to have space for a third filter, so.
Yeah.
If you need more than that a day, maybe you can help us out with the third filter.
Yeah, sure. Like I said to you, right, like, if we're doing stuff here, tell us what the margin is, let me run the numbers and see whether I want to think for a filter or I cut down the number of peons.
We're building the building with the intention of expanding it later on anyway, so it's going to have two filters initially, the microfiltration plants, so there'll always be the third spot and, the third slot in there.
So by the way, you know, in Watertown, in Donahue, they got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the wastewater system, because we are poor doing that. They got a grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand to build that. And in the next budget that's coming out, that's a lot of money, you guys should tap into that, I can point over and tell you, you know, where to tap in, but this coming back, uh, that's what, the bill, the, the, the bill that, that bill is, I don't know the name of it.
Why not?
Yeah, but there is, there is a lot of community-related, uh, uh, efforts in that. You just have to get first on the queue and ask for it.
But I've already submitted the, uh, we've already submitted the grant for like three million out of the project. It's going to cost us about seven point five-ish, but it's also said that it's going to cost us ten because of the increased cost of construction materials after COVID. But if that comes back down a bit, we won't have to pay ten.
Right.